Will the Aldermen please take their seats? Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, May 1st, 2023, and we welcome you to the May Meeting of the Milford Board of Aldermen. Please join me as we salute our flag. Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Alderman Archiola.
Present.
Alderman Beatty.
Present.
Alderman Broster.
Present.
Alderman Casey.
Here.
Alderman Gorman.
Here.
Alderman Genetasio.
Here.
Alderman Marlowe.
Here.
Alderman Moffett.
Here.
Alderman Morennon.
Here.
Alderman Paselli.
Alderman Parente.
Here.
Alderman Vitro. Alderman Vitali. Alderman Willis.
Here.
All are present.
Fourteen present, we do have a quorum. The next portion of the meeting is devoted to public comment. Statements are strictly limited to the legislative function of the Board of Aldermen. Please use every effort to limit public speaking to the permissible business of the Board of Aldermen. The limit time granted to each speaker shall be three minutes. Presidents, taxpayers, and electors may address the Board at this time. The Board encourages speakers not to express derogatory, insensitive, or offensive statements, or to engage in personal attacks against individuals. In order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes. So anyone wishing to address the Board can do so at this time. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jeanne Caballero, 109 Siemens Lane. I have been coming to this Board since January about the condominium trash rebate. I've learned a lot, and I hope the information I've shared with you has made the ordinance board start to think about equity for the 55 and older community and the 55 and older residents that are not in 55 and older communities. I've provided some information to Chris Salee, and I've discussed some things with Chris about trash pickup. I think the biggest thing to understand is condominiums pay the same taxes as any single-family house, but yet single-family houses get two bulk trash pickups. Condominiums got cut to one. We do not get our trash picked up by the city, but we are reimbursed half of what it cost the city to pick up a single-family dwelling. It's not equitable. I was hoping that before the budget was voted on in May, that the ordinance committee would come back with the help of Mayor Blake to amend the amendment to the ordinance on the trash rebate. I have no knowledge of any movement on this, and as I said, I've been here since January. I will continue to come, but I find it hard to believe you have to wait till after the budget passes to possibly put more money into a line item. That doesn't make sense to me, and I'm a math teacher. I just hope that everyone rethinks where you're coming from, and if anyone would like to reach out to me to discuss this, I would really appreciate discussing the numbers, not just that it's a great idea that we do this, because there's a lot of paperwork involved. Thank you.
I'd like to interrupt you just for one minute, sir. I just want to welcome our new newly-elected mayor, Mr. Rich Smith, to the meeting, and also we have and also we have a new Majority Leader, Ellen Beatty. I'm sorry for interrupting you, sir, but you could go ahead now.
No problem. Respected Councilmembers, good evening and namaste. My name is Ranjit Bhavvi, and I have been resident of Milford for last fourteen years. I am also graduate of Milford's Parrot Leadership Training Institute and as well as Citizens Police Academy. I served on the Board of Director on the Milford's, on the Board of Milford's Promise, and I have been serving as a Commissioner of Milford Inland and Wildlife Agency for last four years. I am also volunteer for a society, Hindu Swamshak Sangha, loosely translated as Hindu Service Society, or HSS. It is a 501(c)(3) voluntary nonprofit social, educational, and cultural organization registered in 1989. Our mission is to organize a diverse, vibrant Hindu-American society that can collectively address its challenges and contribute to the welfare of the world. HSS is inspired by the idea that whole world is one family and conducts activities across the United States in order to spread its message widely. HSS conducts regular value-based programs for children, youth, and adults through 220 branches nationwide. We have four branches in Connecticut, the nearest being in Wilton. However, each year in Milford, we donate hundreds of pounds of food during holidays to the centers such as Bethel Center. Every year, HSS celebrates Teacher's Appreciation Day around first week of May. We call it as Guru Vandana. In Hindu culture, teachers are always considered equal to gods. We want to instill in kids that teachers should be respected and revered. Teachers are those unmissable elements of our community that weave the fabric of the society. I am here today to invite council members to a Guru Vandana program held in Comstock Community Center in Wilton on May 13th from 2:00 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. Last year during this festival, more than fifty school teachers participated, and they were felicitated across all the cities in Connecticut. We are also planning to conduct a program to felicitate the first responders of the city in the month of August. I'll be here again in the next few months to extend the invitation to the, for this program to the council members. Thank you all, and God bless the America.
Hello, my name is Ryan McConnell. I live at 114 Maple Street here in Milford. I'm also the owner of Cafe Atlantique downtown by the train station. I've already spoken to you guys a couple of times. Last time I was here to speak on behalf of, you know, the school budget issue, I waved around my prop and said, "We're going to be putting a letter online, and we're going to see businesses sign up to show you that businesses care about this. It's not just a parent issue." We now have roughly seventy businesses. There are more signing on every day. I would urge all of you to go online to the Milford Ed Advocates website. I'll, you know, we definitely have it available here tonight as well, but you can see the list of businesses in real time as we update it. You can see the members of your economic community who are also chiming in to say, "This isn't a parents-only issue." We know that the schools affect the way that our town is seen. I mentioned before that I am an export. I moved here from Chicago. We looked all up and down the train line at the right community for our family, for the business we wanted to start, and of course then we were lucky enough to take over business that was already thriving here during COVID. So other people are looking, and what they see is what we're putting out. And right now, what we're putting out is our school systems are in jeopardy. So, to keep it short, please read our letter. Please look at the other businesses that couldn't all be here tonight to tell you about it and tell you about how they care too before, you know, making your vote. All right? Thank you very much. I'll have a great night.
Good evening. My name is Corey Satterfield. I'm here tonight. I'm a business owner in town. I'm also a lifelong resident. We also have two children that attend Milford Schools. I'm here to tell you guys that over the past few years since COVID, I've been working in primarily Milford in different homes, but a lot of outside residents coming in to live. And the majority of the things that I hear from these people that are buying homes in Milford, that are hiring me to work on these homes are, "We moved to Milford because of the school system, because of how good it is, because of the community that we have here." You know, I grew up in a very abusive home when I was a kid. Alcohol and drugs was a big part of my home life. For me, it was very difficult. Going to school was my safe haven. It was my escape from my home. I had teachers that cared about me. I had teachers that really loved me. I'm still in contact with these teachers to this day. My biggest fear about this budget is if you're cutting the budget, and schools are going to close, and you're going to disperse kids at different schools, these classrooms become bigger. It's harder to pinpoint the kids like me. It's harder to find these kids and get help to them, to say, the connection that teachers can have with students. It's an important issue that you guys have the power to do something about. You guys, it's up to you to say, "You know what? This budget has to not be cut. These kids are important. Our community is important." It's really, a really big issue. You know, I'm sure there's going to be a lot more people you hear from that will tell you the same thing, but as a business owner who works in Milford, primarily Milford, the biggest thing I hear from customers that I deal with are, "We're here because the school system's so good," and the community that we have. Milford is amazing. You know, I grew up here, and I wouldn't want to move anywhere else. We like our kids to stay in our school system here, and we like it the way it is. We don't want to have classrooms that are getting overcrowded. Teachers do a wonderful job. We want to keep them doing a wonderful job. We don't want them to have to try to educate twenty, thirty kids in a classroom. So please, you guys have the power to stop this and keep the funding, and that's what I'm here for tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Adriana Linkstrom. I live at 39 Highview Avenue, and I also own Good Morning Cupcake at 252 Melba Street. When me and my husband were deciding on where we wanted to move, originally, we lived in Stamford. We, of course, obviously looked at pricing first, but what is the most important thing that people consider who are in their late twenties when buying a house? The school system. Why? Because what is the next step for us in life? Having children. I have a five-month-year-old daughter, and eventually, I hope to stay in Milford with my business and watch it grow, as well as watching her grow. I never had the chance, when I was in school, to participate in trades, so I never got to have a classroom where I was able to learn how to bake and learn how to do things that I now use on a daily basis for my career. So taking funding away from school takes away the opportunity for kids to learn trades. Not everybody is a college person. My high school guidance counselor told me, she said to me, "You know, I don't think you're smart enough for college. Maybe you should just go to a community college. Wouldn't it have been nice if there was actually things in high school for me to do to find out that I'm smart, but maybe college and getting a degree in marketing or accounting or something like that isn't actually for me?" There's tons of kids that need to understand what electrical work is, or auto mechanics, or baking and cooking, and those are really important. So if we keep funding in the schools, I hope that we can keep giving our kids the ability to do something that maybe isn't traditional, like an accounting or something of that sort of sense, but also keep the money in Milford. People are going to leave if the school systems tank. I, for one, will be thinking of that, because my daughter may not be in the school system yet, but she will be eventually. And if people leave Milford, then who are going to support our local businesses? Just something to think about. Thank you.
Hello, Sky Cornell. I'm at 14 Bonsaline Street, and thank you to our business community members who spoke in support of the fully-proposed Board of Ed budgets. Thank all of you for your service. I'm also a volunteer with Milford Ed Advocates, and I came tonight to share with you, and I promise briefly, my experience over the last few weeks. We have connected with, and this is a pretty conservative number, over a thousand Milford residents. They've already taken some form of action, whether that is signing a petition online. Now they're seeking us out to sign a written petition, sharing information with their neighbors. They're writing and they're calling each of you, we know, and we showed up for more than five hours of public comment, which we're not doing tonight. We don't want to take all that time again. But more recently, our volunteer corps has been really all over Milford. We've been at charity events. We've been at plays. We've been at sporting events, outknocking on doors, and the conversations that we've been having have been really easy. Like, this isn't the kind of thing that I think is necessarily easy for everyone to do, but we've had some feedback that I'd like to share, and four things. One, people are really aware of the issue. They're getting more and more educated on the issue and in support of the Board of Ed proposed budget. They're finding the budget to be really sensible and transparent, which people have appreciated. Most consistently, and a big area of concern, is that two to three months is really not enough time to enact the changes that will need to occur if you choose not to restore the full budget. People can really see that, and that is meaningful to them and touching hearts. And finally, some people have had the opportunity to talk with you directly, small group conversations, one-on-one, and they really appreciated that, those who have, and we've been encouraging, of course, really respectful, direct conversations, even when everyone isn't on exactly the same page. So thank you for those who have. Some have been really disappointed that they haven't had a chance to talk one-on-one, and so I am, part of what I'm here today is just to elevate that. I'd like to, people would like to hear, talk with you directly, hear, you know, have you hear their stories, find out what your thoughts are on the vision of Milford schools, your vision for Milford, what your questions and concerns are, and they'd like to share that directly where they feel they haven't been able to. So, thank you very much. There's still more time before the budget vote. The residents, some of the residents we've talked to have asked us to bring attention to this and to encourage more of those conversations, and I hope you'll consider it. Thank you again for your service.
Evan Winters, 30 Liberty Street, Milford. I don't have kids, so, different matter. Last year, I asked somebody about working on Mondo Pond and the Beaverbrook Wardwalk, and then I was talking to the land management guy. He said, "There is no plan." And I was curious, can somebody here down the road find out who is responsible for the maintenance besides cutting the grass? It needs, it's in desperate need of help. It's been there thirty years, and the powers that be have not done a thing to that place. There used to be drains on Mondo Pond. They're gone. Somebody stole the pipes. And, you know, we, Public Works is sure to help. They do a heck of a job, as far as I'm concerned, for what they get, the manpower they have. But a long time ago, a cousin of mine told me, "Why do people move to Milford? It's services, location." The tax rate definitely has an effect on it, but it's, he went and told me, "Any mortgage guy in Milford would tell you, services of Milford are what people coming for. Location, because of New York and Stanford, they all come here from there." But I wish you would find out, somebody would do some maintenance on Mondo Pond and Beaverbrook. It's muddy. There used to be a lot of older, I'm old, but there used to be older people walking with more infirmities, canes, walkers, wheelchairs. They're not there anymore. It's all washed out. It's been thirty years. Time to spend some money on it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andy Fowler. I live at 10 Dart Hill Road. I'm not here tonight in my capacity as a Board of Education member, but as a Milford resident concerned about the potential closure of a school and what led us here. The truth is, this decision wasn't made over enrollment. This is the result of reckless politics played by now-departed Mayor Ben Blake, the Democrat leadership that has had a one-party rule over Milford for the past decade. For years, Blake and his team have touted Milford's financial stability, consecutively lowering taxes and so forth, yet here we are, debating whether to close a school over financial reasons, which leads someone like me to suspect whether Milford was actually in a healthy financial state all along. Nevertheless, Mayor Blake directed the Board of Finance to cut the Board of Education budget by nearly $2 million, knowing full well that it would result in the closing of a school, and he did so without alerting our superintendent or the Board of Education. When I asked Dr. Katia if Mayor Blake ever discussed a possible school closing or even a strategic plan to close one down the road, she said no. So did Mayor Blake and his allies simply wait long enough to throw this grenade on the community before he could be held accountable by voters? How is that responsible leadership? It isn't. But then again, Mayor Blake has had terrible relations with the Board of Education and Dr. Katia since she was hired in 2018, and everyone knows it. Furious, he was not a party to that decision-making. Blake treated the Board and superintendent with silence and contempt. His departure from Milford and his final city budget presented opportunity for political payback, and it's at the expense of Harborside Middle School's parents, students, teachers, and staff, who have now been thrown into disarray, confusion, and anxiety about the future. This decision should have been made where it belongs, with the Board of Education, those who have been duly elected to oversee the schools. That is the Board's responsibility. By removing this decision from the Board of Education, Mayor Blake and his friends have shown they cannot trust the good people of Milford to have a potentially tough conversation. And how does this create an environment for our students to thrive, for our teachers to teach, and for our parents and residents to be reassured about the well-being of our schools? It doesn't. So I encourage everyone here to find their Board of Aldermen, ask them to vote yes to restore the funding Mayor Blake and his allies have cut for this upcoming year, so we can encourage an open, transparent discussion about the future of Milford schools without the reckless politics. Thank you.
My name is Alan Kohler. I live at 29 Audubon Close, right on Mondo Pond, and I'd like to talk about Mondo Pond briefly, but not so much the pond itself or even the path that goes around the pond, but the roads that are around it, and those would be Subway, and Nogatuck, and Grinnell, and West. So what I'd like to talk about is, I've recognized there's a tremendous amount of litter on the shoulders of those roads. No one seems to be paying attention to cleaning that stuff up. I'd like to ask your permission. Do you mind if I hand these out? I'm going to read my letter. I wish to express my concern regarding the abundance of litter I've seen on the roads immediately surrounding Mondo Pond. And again, I'm talking about the roads, not the path. I've attached a map, if you look at what I just handed you, I've attached a map showing the roads surrounding Mondo Pond. I walked around on those roads and took a tally of where there's a lot of litter, and there is a tremendous amount of litter. Small bottle, alcohol bottles, containers of all kinds, old, broken, ripped-up bags of dried leaves, and just a tremendous variety of litter. It's really a shame. It's like nobody, everybody can enjoy the pond, but nobody is ultimately responsible for it. So it's a concept called the tragedy of the commons, where, you know, everybody, you know, if there's no ultimate responsibility, the resource ultimately degrades and it's not useful anymore. The litter, okay, so I've seen a large amount of litter on the shoulders of these roads. I spoke by phone with a DPW person in January about the litter, but nothing has happened. The litter is unsightly. In addition, the litter is potentially damaging to the natural environment, including the wildlife, the fish, the birds, the turtles, living in or seasonally visiting Mondo Pond and the surrounding woods. You know, that's sort of like an incline down toward the pond. That litter, or some of it, is going to end up in the water. Okay, this is a beautiful jewel that belongs to everybody in the town in Milford. If you come and you look at not just the main pond, but the three or four other little ones around it, there's waterfalls, there's birds, there's turtles sunning themselves on the rocks on any given day. It's just beautiful, and people can really enjoy it. But I recommend that you send somebody down there or a team of people to regularly clean the litter. People just don't seem to care. They're driving down the road, apparently, and just throwing small bottles of alcohol out the window onto the road sides. So I'm asking if you can please So I'm asking if you can please, see if you can arrange to have somebody do a cleanup, and I would even suggest the possibility of putting up a few no-littering signs with the possibility, you know, of monetary penalties. It's really, it's a gem that belongs to the town and really should be taken better care of. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Gaby Burney of 96 Centennial Drive, and this is my daughter Faith. I'm not up here to talk about the education budget, even though I'm very much in support of the funding, and if half of what Andy said is true, I'm very concerned about the future of Milford, because politics has no business in the education of the kids who are our future. But my daughter would like to talk to you and invite you, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Faith Burney, and I decided to invite you guys to my play, which is coming up on May 20th, and during the May live, June, at the process at 3 o'clock, and I will appreciate you guys come, and I hope you could join the song.
Okay, to clarify that for everybody, the Milford Adaptives Program, which is run under the Milford Rec Department, is hosting a production of The Little Mermaid. It is free to everyone, it will be at Parsons Memorial Auditorium, and it is on Saturday, May 20th, at 3 o'clock. Thank you.
I don't know how to follow that. Okay, good evening, my name is Bridgette Kraus, I live at 42 Nels Road, I am the president of the Milford Council of PTAs. The Milford Council of PTAs is the umbrella organization for all the PTAs in town. PTA's mission is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. I'd like to thank you for your time, that you've spent listening to what we love about our schools and our vision for the future over the last several weeks. So in an effort to respect your time and the business this board needs to carry out tonight, we didn't call on a big crowd of constituents to speak yet again. I'm here tonight on behalf of PTA leaders to express concerns on the budget process. We ask for your support in addressing these issues, especially issues that can be changed for next year. The public hearing with the Board of Finance on February 28th did not allow for adequate opportunity for public testimony. The meeting was virtual, and several parents came to offer testimony, but parents who attended were unsure what to do in order to participate. I had my own struggles, a terrible internet connection, so each time I was reconnected, it was silent, and I just assumed it was a bad connection and gave up. Who knew it was just the quietest meeting ever? I wish public comment with the Board of Finance was in person. I hope this is a change that can be made for next year. Representing an organization with a mission built on advocacy, my next concerns are about the upcoming budget vote. In the city charter, it says May 7th is the deadline for the vote, but it doesn't seem to be a thing. At the last budget meeting on April 27th, the meeting was called to recess, but a time and date that it would resume was not given. Members of our community are trying to participate in the process, it is unclear when the next meeting will be and how many more there will be after that. I understand there are many moving parts, but I just want to be given notice, we all do, regarding the next meeting date. I am hopeful that it was time to vote on this budget, there will be a roll call vote. I watched a special meeting last week, and it was confusing to say the least. I am worried about the process and about the perception of the process. I represent an organization that strives to engage and empower families and communities to advocate for all children. I am very proud of my community for their bravery in public speaking, the importance they gave this in their busy lives over the last several weeks, and how articulately they expressed the level of importance education has in our community. I implore you to make the last piece of this process as transparent and clear to families as possible. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Elizabeth Oak, I'm also known as Emmy amongst my friends. I live at 30 Durinna Place, here in Milford, and I've been a resident for five and a half years. I've lived in many places in this country and outside of this country. I was born here. I'm a dyslexic. I've succeeded from practically nothing to becoming second-in-command of one of the biggest carpet design studios in this country down south. I'm very proud of what I've succeeded doing, but it was due to the education I got of help. Now, kids do not come all one size fits all. Classes should not be any bigger than 20, because every kid has an issue. Doesn't mean dyslexia, it means many different things. If you have classes bigger, it does not work. Now, Milford has had its millage rate reduced, I believe, six years in a row. Granted, our taxes went up last year, but frankly, that was the price of our properties. And that is to be expected, doesn't matter. I think honestly, this budget cut to do with education needs to be put back to where it was, if you want a city and a future of children to grow and be good citizens, have businesses, excel, and seek properties, carry on improving, and more and more businesses, and a happy environment with your greenness of vegetation, of the beach, and everything. You need to put money into it. I don't have children, I don't have grandchildren. So I am here because I care about the kids' education, and I care about what the future is. I'm expected to live close to 100 years old, so I will see the result of your decision. And I'm afraid of what it will become. Please, don't turn us back. Stop cutting the budget. The fat's been taken out, we are down to the skeleton. If you take the skeleton apart, like anybody, it falls apart on the floor, and takes a hell of a long time, if ever, to come back. Please, thank you, and I know it's not just education, it's other areas. I'm willing to pay more, I'm willing to accept a higher millage rate. Yes, I won't like it on my pocketbook, but I don't care, I want us to be good. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carol Lee Schultz, and I live at 100 Sea Flower Road, here in Milford. I just want to come here to say that I've done my research, I have reached out to not only my aldermen in District 3, but also District 2, because I am the PTA president at Pumpkin Delight School, so that encompasses our entire school. It is sad to me, as a voter and as a taxpayer, that I only received one response back. I wrote probably six to eight emails and received one blanket response. To me, that's unacceptable. I, in 2013, got married, I sent an invitation to President Barack Obama, he responded. I got a handwritten letter, probably not exactly from him, but it was from someone in his office, he responded. My local government elected officials did not respond to my email except one blanket email. So remember that, I won't forget it in November.
Would anyone else like to address the board at this time? Seeing none, Alderman Beatty, Agenda Item Number 3, Consideration of Minutes for the Regular Meeting Held on April 3, 2023.
I make a motion for consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen, held on April 3, 2023.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Alderman Beatty?
No.
Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number 4, There Was No Special Meeting. Agenda Item Number 5, Chairman's Report. I just want to bring your attention to the fact that Mother's Day is in the month of May, and I'd like to wish all the mothers on this board, and all the mothers in Milford out there a very happy Mother's Day, hope that everything turns out just the way their wishes are. I don't have anything else at this time, and we'll move on to Agenda Number 6, Mayor's Report and Recommendation. Is there any report from the mayor?
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to miss the opportunity to say I'm thrilled to be here, and I look forward to working with each of you in the weeks and months ahead. I also want to take note of the retirement of my predecessor, Ben Blake. I don't think there's anyone in this city that loves this town more than he. I drove the city with him recently, he knows every inch of the city, he knows where everybody lives. You may have heard the story that on his second date with his now-wife Sandy, he chose to take her to the wastewater treatment plant, because to him, that's exciting. Many may not agree with his decisions, and I'm a good friend, I didn't always agree with his decisions, and we're different people, but no one could doubt his dedication, his commitment, and his love of this community. Eleven and a half years he spent, and when you go out with him into the public, the voters love him. It's evidenced by the numbers that he would get every election year. So I want to recognize Ben is a great mayor, a great citizen of this town, who devoted much, and he will be missed. Again, even if you don't agree with all of his decisions, any of you who know him know he's a good man. I won't try to fill his shoes, we're different people, we have different styles, but nonetheless, I won't forget the work he did for this city, and I want to honor that. I also want to remind folks that we have scheduled the Memorial Day Parade for May 28th, a Sunday, wreath laying at 10 o'clock on the Green, and step off at 2 o'clock for the parade. So I look forward to seeing you all there, as we remember those who have sacrificed for this great country. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Appreciate all the kind words towards our previous mayor, Ben Blake. Open on their Agenda Item Number 7, There Was No Unfinished Business. Moving on to Agenda Number 8, Moving On To New Business, Alderman Beatty, Agenda Item Number 8A.
For the appointment of Tiana Perini, 32 Alexander Road, 06461, as a member of the Conservation Commission, to fill the present vacancy, term expiring December 31st, 24.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. At this time, will our newly confirmed Conservation Commission member step forward to be sworn in by our city clerk, Karen Fortunati? The next item on our agenda is Item 8B, Alderman Beatty.
The Board of Alderman Approval is requested for the Attached Resolution Regarding Voting District Reappointment/Reapportionment Plan.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Alderman Casey?
Thank you, through you, I'm really happy that we don't have to do any redistricting this time period, over 10 years, so just, because it makes for difficult decisions between, you know, us. So I'm really happy that we don't have to this year. What, I guess the mayor, oh, what do you anticipate, like, with the future of, like, next 10 years? Like, you know, I know there's many apartments being built in downtown, do you anticipate that a fifth or a fourth district is being different, or what do you anticipate?
Mr. Chairman, through you, Alderman Casey, I think it's hard to predict, I mean, 10 years ago, we had some substantial changes in the districts that required redrawing lines, where now, 10 years later, very little change. I don't know what the apartments downtown or some of the developments may yield. Keep in mind that these changes measure all citizens, not just voters, so it includes children and non-voters. Hard to predict, but I think it's 10% for states actually? If the very, Casey Law, I'm sorry, 10% is usually a threshold by which we decide that new lines need to be drawn, well under that this time. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion? Alderman Ginatasio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, good evening to the members of the board. I would just like to make a comment, I happened to be on the Redistricting Committee back in 2013, when we did have to change the lines that Mayor Smith referenced, and Mayor Smith's brother, Frank Smith, was an alderman at that time, and he also sat on the committee with me. And as you can see, based on the data, there really has been no shift, it's less than 4%. But to Mayor Smith's point, back in 2013, it was almost 31%. And unfortunately, I lost in my district, it was part of Live Oaks, and Live Oaks School and that whole neighborhood became part of the 4th district, and I happened to go to Live Oaks, so, you know, it wasn't a good time for me, I can tell you that. I think I lost some votes, but, you know, that's the way the world works, and, you know, to Alderman Casey's point, I'm glad that we don't have to entertain this at this time, because it is very cumbersome, it takes a lot of time, and, you know, hopefully the next 10 years will bring some, you know, some other new data, and it's all driven by the census. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any more discussion under motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Agenda Item Number 9, There Is No New Business. Agenda Item Number 10, Moving On To Budget Memo Transfers, Alderman Beatty, Agenda Item Number 10.
Approval of the Budget Memo Transfers Number 7 and Number 8, Fund 1005 and Fund 2812.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Alderman Germain?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to, I don't know if it's the mayor or our finance director, Peter, can you just give a little more explanation on the amount of transfers and where they all are going? There's a lot of money there. I understand some of them are the wage, catching up with the wage contracts, but what else is going on there? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Germain, yes, this transfer is solely to cover the retroactive wage increases as a result of of the contracts that have settled in this fiscal year. And just to walk you briefly through it, the, on the first page, one of four, the first line item, Other Wage Adjustments, that represents the benefit salary reserve that we budget for each year in the general fund, and that is the entire balance of the general fund salary reserve. As you note, at the bottom, the total out of the Fund 1005, which is the general fund, is $2,823, uh, $2,823,000 rather, $921. So there is a difference or a shortfall which we are covering by making transfers from the other accounts that you see listed in the following line items. And the Fund 2012, that is the sewer fund, that is a separate fund, and that covers the wastewater employees, and that transfer is $241,902. And you have the combined total listed at the bottom of $3,65,823.
Is there any more discussion on the motion? I don't see any. No more discussion, we'll go to vote. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Item 11, moving on to refunds, Alderman Beatty, Agenda Item
May 1, 2023 meeting is $47,917.43.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Open under Agenda Item Number 12, are there any reports from any of the standing committees? I do not see any, so we'll close under Rule 12, go under Agenda Item Number 13. Are there any reports from any of the special committees? I don't see any of those either. Close under 13, we'll open under Agenda Item Number 14. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was wondering if in light of the parents here who this evening and their curiosity about when our next, our budget session will begin with the calendar, might there be anything we can inform them about or to the mayor perhaps prior to going into executive session as we might not come out for a number of minutes?
Mr. Mayor?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman De Parente. I met with our finance director today. We really look to find a date after we've gotten all of our numbers back from the state and run city numbers. The earliest we've talked about is next Thursday, but we're going to check in on early next week to see where we are. We need to know what our reimbursement is, our funding from the state, before we can finalize the budget. So it won't be this week, if that helps, and I'll ensure that the date is advertised and communicated to the public in a timely fashion.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Joining us in executive session for all items will be the mayor, Rich Smith, city attorney, John Bertram, and city assessor, Marcus Eric. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded to go into executive session. All in favor? Opposed? We're in executive session.
Seventy West Main Street. If you're a big fan of Michael. Ocean State Labs, I definitely don't turn around like the I'm lots. I'm like, who do you like, Momo? But this is, this one is significant because obviously. A lot of agents. It's a lot of, uh, twenty twenty value. Fifteen forty. The rebound is fifteen forty seven to seventy dollars. A little less than a hundred thousand. The amount of stores. Currently, the store is vacated right before the rebound. Golden Road. Here one. Once upon a trial. Championed and half a layer with the, with that. It was the same guy. Both of them were, it seemed like a fit up. Football with the, that. Income expense data indicated market value of eighty. Two thousand twenty. An increase of a bit in two thousand twenty-one. To nine. The settlement value is four years twelve months. Better than the ten year one, but it's not the fifteen. Fifty seven. People told me, people were talking. Drop down. It doesn't include Momo, doesn't include the guy. The act of the artist's stuff. Porch and shit. In the back there. Historically, it's. The world. Centered. And not. So I think that one. Again, because they wanted to come in at ten million. Income expense. Or maybe less than that. Getting them at twelve two. Getting their freedom for that. We're not suggested to how we get these books. How we get these. One attorney represented for the profits. Another attorney represented. What did you? Spend your entire debt to that attorney? Okay, how many, how many you have? It goes to twenty five properties. Marcus, Matthew, you would spend your entire debt on properties. International. You know, the authorities way back to school. It's really kind of funny because they enjoy being. It's involved. Next one we do is thirty eight Wellington Road. Um, maybe you've gotten off. The Merritt Parkway. Going south. Across the street from Kinderdick. This had a twenty twenty value of six point one. And a rebound of four point nine. Due to vacancies. They said. Four point four. About half a million dollar difference in the rebound. It was purchased in February of twenty. For four point five. The settlement value is four point six. It's. Right now, DCF. Seven, seven, eight. Our income approach. Uh, do you think? Like the other buildings. Apartment. So we're, we're writing this thing. Four point six. Uh, certain just looking at the comments. Stable tenant. But DCF is paying. Next property we have is three oh five McHaven Avenue. Drive. The line is in electronic sign. Fan encades the sign. Or McHaven Avenue. Up. Electronic billboard. We have it. So this one. Pretty low numbers compared to what you can hear. This is twenty twenty value of five hundred thirty three thousand. Rebound six hundred ten thousand. A pet, a hell of a period of value of four forty. Uh, only seven of the five thirty three, which is basically sixty. It happened. Not much of a problem. Gas station, so our next, like income, income rent. This building is owned by the state. It's more rent. There's a little. Single law. Big shops. Shops. Three day. Always think about. Created. I think that has to change. I always said, Joe, by the supporting that gets it forward. In fact. Yeah, the gas station. Their footprint. Their footprint. Probably not part of this, but. Well, it's something to check out. Yeah. Do you have a, yeah, no, I mean, it looks like they're screening their storage. Their, uh. I'm, I'm just wondering if you could, uh, assess. Just for, for all the. There's some people, I mean, in fact, it's. It's happening. We need, we need to get from this. From the building department. Whether. Some people will pull from it. Place. Some people will pull up from it to. Upgrade to two hundred twenty. We get the house and the line up being pulled. Got the capital of the house. Couldn't order to get to the side. Down all the drive line. Down all the drive line. And then it looks like down the inside, but then they didn't. Uh, so we get a report. On. Smallish renovations. Shop. Probably about ninety percent. Many of permits were pulled. John mentioned the sign. Permit. They go through the back side. They go back. And sort of that's how. Now. Last enough. This is supposed to be off the road. Anybody here besides. It's the accurate dealership. Um, so it's the accurate dealership is right, uh, it's gonna be. Probably two or three values. Slash. But, um. Twenty twenty value is five point four seven eight. Rebound. Five point four seven three. Um, they came in at. Four seven nine. The settlement value is five point four seven five. So. It would decrease, um. Then, then the rebound, but only by a couple hundred thousand dollars. Um. Income approach that we use for the rebound, uh, was five point two. So. The income data supports itself. Yes, Marcus was actually asking. It's like, did he talk about that? Twenty nineteen, they pulled a permit. So they pulled out a permit. Tolding about the money. Different. My field partner showed us three other letters. Fire. And after. But. Sight visits. Uh, basically, they rehabbed. Showed on that. The big boys. And they also added a second story of untenary specifically forced stores. So following my visit. Uh, back in twenty. Twenty. Three different ones. Grand. This is what's happening. That's why. That's fairly far. It's. And. That's. We're coming out of. Seven. Like. Uh. There's a question. Uh, it's called. The. Large. It's. I would say. Uh. I'm. More access. Sure. Wondering if they're alive. That was. Because that's that. Nothing. You. The one thing I wrote. Should have kept yourself like that. We locked in. And. God bless too much. Last. We hear. He said. Very great. There's a difference. What is happening? Something. The one that. Excuse me, John. Can we get an update on what those are and the potential viability? Eventually? Should we know? I, I, I. I'm, I'm low. I mean, it's, it's pending, so I could talk about it. The fact he said, there's something going on right now. Other than we have an open dialogue. Um. Their process. Whether it's back or if we have them. Um. Conversation. Uh, that, and I would say that. There's other. Things going on in terms of. Uh, you know. People involved that will probably make a move in the next several weeks. Um, but that. Uh, I'll be involved. But. It, it hears something I was sort of past that. This meeting. See, ensuring there are high REs. From the represent. What's our period? Or. Only be able to dialogue. Help him. Just a quick, quick question. Uh, with that. Real property settlement. I don't recall from last session session. We did talk about the appraisal issue. That. I presume you'll at some point. Tell us. Yeah, that's, well, that's the one that, that is very good. And, uh, I will tell you that, uh, we hired advisor. Uh, crazers. Uh, for that. How don't call me. Of course. That's a complication. Top of the box. Completed. Properly. Accurate. I know that. A lot of pressure on us. If. Willing. That are great. Uh, you know. Now, if you have a reason not to. Be tactically. Supportive of the money. Like ourselves. Lawyer. Tell me. For all the. Go ahead and make my. It's. Compensation is tied. What? Hard life. But. I expect. We hired. Officially after he says sixty. Same. No, but. You should have. You know, I would see, see she's like. You don't get paid, but he gets paid. I'm gonna be. Big.
Mr, Mr. Mayor. Can we get that clock fixed?
Uh, no.
Are the lights fixed?
I think it's a double A battery.
It's dark, it's dark in here, isn't it? And the clock in my office fell off the wall when they tried to fix it. And there's just a big hole in the wall now. Okay, got it. Let me write it down.
We are out of executive session. Alderman BD is their motion.
Yes. I make a motion to approve the settlement of Keith U. Keith versus the City of Milford regarding one Lawrence Court as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman BD.
I'm just reporting that the motion to approve the settlement of Milford Chase Ventures LLC versus the City of Milford regarding sixty-eight dash seventy West Main Street as discussed in executive session has been delayed to properly notice and will be put on the agenda for the next meeting. I make a motion to approve the settlement of Milford Green Ventures LLC versus the City of Milford regarding one twenty dash one Washington Street as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I make a motion to approve the settlement of Boston Road Ventures LLC versus the City of Milford regarding six seven oh dash six Boston Post Road as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously.
For the record, fourteen E, the motion to approve the settlement of Milford Hunt Ventures LLC versus the City of Milford regarding two five three West River Street as discussed in the executive session has also been delayed to properly notice and will be on the agenda for next meeting. I make a motion to approve the settlement of Milford Associates versus the City of Milford at L regarding seventy Turnpike Square as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Fourteen G, I make a motion to approve the settlement of Gabriella Realty of Milford, Connecticut LLC versus the City of Milford at Al regarding four oh one Old Gate Lane as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I, I've voted abstained due to a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Wait.
On which one? Fourteen. Fourteen H, I make a motion to approve the settlement of Kevil LLC versus City of Milford regarding thirty eight Wellington Road as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Fourteen I, I make a motion to approve the settlement of K Brothers versus the City of Milford regarding three oh five New Haven Avenue as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Fourteen J, I make a motion to approve the settlement of fifteen oh three Boston Post Road versus the City of Milford regarding fifteen oh three Boston Post Road as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman BD.
That's it. That's it?
Is that the last one?
Yes.
All righty then. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion is made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor? Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.